Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to open the special session of the City of Crescent City's council meeting. We're holding our interviews for the vacancy on the city council. So, we will call the order, please.
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Mayor Protem Enia?
Here.
And Mayor Murray?
Here, thank you. And Councilmember Shalong will lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have a moment of silence in order to honor Don Olson Senior, who passed away last night. He was hired by the city in 1972 and served as code enforcer, building inspector, assistant public works director, retired at the age of seventy in 1997, and he was a member of the volunteer police department, starting in 1951, and was appointed the fire chief in 1982, and he retired from fire chief in 1997, although he continued to serve as a volunteer until 2003. So, let's have a moment of silence for Mr. Olson. And his son, Don Olson Junior, is in the audience, and we want to express our condolences and sympathies to you and your family.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. I'm a strong advocate of the city and one to argue with when it comes to city-county consolidation. I remember that period, the fire whistle was just the whistle sound. It would wake you up all the time. I mean, you have to listen to that.
Thank you.
Don, I want to express my gratitude for his wonderful service to the city, and I remember the last time I saw him, I think was at the last...
Could you ask them to turn their cellphones? Could everyone please turn off their cellphones for this meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was at the last fire dinner, the recognition dinner, and, you know, up until, I'm sure, the end, he just loved this community, and we have some pretty incredible people here. And I was just emailing Kevin Hartwick this afternoon about the chamber dinner and the awards given out, and I said, "It's too bad that we don't celebrate the people that live here more often than once a year," because it really reminds us about how wonderful this community is and what, you know, great citizens live here and what they give back to this community, and he's one of them. So, thanks.
Anyone else in the council have a comment? Okay, right. Thank you for being here. We will move on to the matter at hand, which is the interviews of the applicants for city council, and I want to say again that I really appreciate all the candidates, your interest in the city, and your willingness to come forward and throw your hat in the ring. So, we've tried to get this process worked out as smoothly as possible. Last week, I met with our city manager, Mr. Plotzo, our city attorney, Mr. Black, and our city clerk, Ms. Patch, and we think we have it all set up for you, so it'll go smoothly. But this is how we'll do it. This is an open meeting, however, we're requesting that the applicants remain, and we've changed it from the hallway to the board closed chambers back here, so you have seats to sit down while you wait, and we're asking you to sit back there until it's your turn to be interviewed, and then, once your interview has been completed, you're welcome to stay out here with the audience. And then, once all the candidates have been interviewed, we will start with, oh, let's see, each candidate will be given a total ten minutes for the interview process. Six of those minutes will be used during the question and answer portion of the interview, and the candidate will be allowed four minutes to explain to the council why they are the appropriate choice for this appointment. Each council member will ask one question only to each one of you, the same question each time, and we will be using public comment for the time or so. When the interviewees are up here at the podium, you can see when you have thirty seconds left to wrap up your thoughts, and then, you will be asked to sit down until we conduct all of the interviews. The council will conduct an individual selection process, which will be a choice of our top two candidates. We're not using a scoring mechanism, however, we will be making marks next to your names and of the top two, in our opinion, individually, not collectively at that time. And then, what we will do is we'll turn the scorecard over to our city clerk, and she will see if there is at least two candidates that are in the, that all of us have consensus with as our top two candidates, and we'll go from there. Ideally, some of us will agree on our top two candidates, and then, the process will be that we will make a motion for an appointment and then take the vote, hold vote. So, that's how it will work.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, are we taking public comment after each candidate or at the end of all interviews?
Thank you for asking. We will be taking public comment at the end of all the interviews, so public comment will be the same as always. You will have three minutes after you state your name, and if you're a city or county resident, to make your case for your favorite candidate.
Madam Mayor, I had a couple of clarifying questions. For the record, have any backroom deals been made that excluded me to arrive at a decision on who will be picked today?
I'm not sure I understand the question, so would you please repeat it into the mic so the audience can hear?
Can you hear me? Have any backroom deals been made that excluded me to arrive at a decision on who will be picked today?
I can answer that, and I can say no. In fact, we are using one of your questions that you submitted, so you've been very much included in this process and as you have the right to be.
Second question. The questions I submitted about corruption, is there any reason why I can't ask that question instead of this question on the sheet?
There was a group decision on what questions would be asked, and you have a question that you submitted that you will be using instead of the other ones that you submitted.
Will I be punished in any way if I choose to ask the question on corruption?
You will be disrupted, and that question will not be asked.
Isn't this hindering my freedom of speech?
No, it isn't, and if we...
Mr. Black, could you review the policies when it comes to interviewing people and that you have to ask the same questions, or what that policy is?
And answer her question directly?
Well, the preferred practice in conducting interviews of multiple candidates like this is to give each candidate an opportunity to answer the same questions as all other candidates. And then, each candidate in this particular case is also being given four minutes to discuss the issues that they feel are most significant for them in promoting themselves as your eventual appointee. So, they have the ability in that last four minutes to address any question that they believe is significant in the selection process. As far as freedom of speech, the city council acts as a body, and certainly Ms. Westfall is free to take the podium as a public commenter, and in debate over who is ultimately selected, she's free to make her points. But the questions that were selected, basically selected by the mayor in consultation with the city manager, the city clerk, and me, if the council as a majority wishes to override those selections, then Ms. Westfall has the opportunity now to make a motion to that effect and to change out one or all of the questions. But I believe to override the mayor, she would need three votes of the four of you, and she could do that if she can argue for that. So, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I don't believe the council is required to accede to questions that you, as a majority, feel are disruptive and not helpful to the process.
During the four-minute period that each applicant gets, are we going to be able to question them?
That isn't the way that the mayor has designed this, but once again, if you could, if you want to make a motion and you have the support of two other council members, you can change the design of the process.
I find that that's probably highly unlikely.
And one other matter that Ms. Westfall had sent an email about was the order of the interviewees, and what we did was, in order to be fair, we simply drew your names out of a hat, and so, the first one was the number one, which is Mr. Young, and so on down the line. I'll read the order of the applicants. It'll be Michael Young, first, Blake Enscore, second, Roger Gitlin, third, Richard Holly, fourth, Ron Gastineau, fifth, and Mr. Alioty, sixth. So, that's the order of the interviews, and you each have ten minutes. So, at this time, I will ask those who wish to cooperate with our request to go into the board chambers, closed session area, with the exception of Mr. Young, you can stay here. Thank you for your cooperation. It's greatly appreciated. And this, for the audience's reference, is that we ask the other candidates to stay in a different room so that they won't hear the questions that we're asking and have more time to prepare and answer. It's not necessarily fair to the first person being interviewed if the last person has, like, an hour to prepare their answers. So, the first question will be asked by Councilmember Shalong to Mr. Young.
Whether blessing or not, oh, well, it's the luck of the draw.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mike, for applying. I respect you very much and have enjoyed working with you in the past, so the first question is, what ideas do you have for increasing...
Excuse me, but could you please turn off your cellphones? And if you aren't able to do so, I'm going to ask you to leave the room, because this is somewhat of a serious matter that we all like to have, give our interviewees the respect that they deserve.
Thank you. What ideas do you have for increasing city revenues in a time of fiscal difficulties?
I suppose if I have a solution, answer to that one, I wouldn't be here applying for the job as a city council member, because I would probably be making a fortune somewhere. Because it's difficult, because mostly, most of the revenues that the city obtains are controlled by outside forces. There are some taxes that you can levy or some service charges that you can increase, but I think you would raise the ire of the community, as you have done before when you've had to deal with, legitimately so, for example, the sewer rates. Sales tax is one pretty well set by the state. You can adopt it, you can have it. You don't have a property tax any longer. Some of the state's inventions are determined by state formula. So, what it comes down to is how do you develop the local economy in a way to increase those things that would generate the taxes? And that would be some form of encouraging the additional development, particularly those that would generate, say, sales tax, for example. That would be one of the ones that would generate, your TOT tax, encourage more tourism, to have more people come and stay and stay longer in the community. There would be also annexation, more population is one that would generate some, because many of the revenues are generated by population, but that brings with it more expenses too, but that would be one of the ways to generate revenue.
Thank you.
The second question is, what do you believe are the top five strategic priorities for this city?
One was really implied sort of in the first question, and that is, something facing all the cities throughout the state, maybe throughout the country, but throughout the state, is just the whole revenue process with the economy and the situation in Sacramento, you know, and what has happened with the state budget and how the state is going after revenues wherever they can find them, and those are becoming, taken out of the pockets now of local agencies. I think counties have probably seen it, seen themselves hit harder than cities have yet, although the redevelopment agency thing is one that's recently hit cities. And so, how to develop more revenue would be one. The business development, of course, that again goes back to developing revenues again. I think revenues and budgeting are probably, maybe, all five. City has a lot of functions that it provides, police, fire, water, sewer, housing authority, and I think for the most part, all of them are doing very well. Not that they couldn't be improved, you know, not that they don't have to be looked at as to whether they need to spend more or less. I would hate to try to pick out one. I'll tell you one that I think is a high priority, personally, a very high priority in the community, although they're doing a good job, but I'd like to see more done, is the volunteer fire department. I think they are totally underappreciated, the service that they provide the community for what it costs you, because you have many men, such as Mr. Olson, Don Olson, who, of course, just passed away, but there's, I don't know, fifty, sixty other men that commit themselves to regular training and the like to serve this community, and we have a very high fire insurance rating, or very low rating, which is very good for insurance rates because of the fine fire department equipment that they have.
Mr. Young, what is your style in building consensus?
Oh, there's a book that's been finished reading called Tribal Leadership. It deals with consensus building, and it deals with having to work as "we" rather than "I." In most cases, organizations, your management, your personnel have, "I'm here, you know, I'm good, you're bad," implied in it, you know, and it's less of a team, of actually of a "we" doing things too often. And we need to try to work where we become "we's" rather than "I's," you know, and that seems so obvious, but yet, we don't do it. When it comes right down to what we do day to day, we tend to be self-focused and look for ourselves rather than looking for the greater good for whatever the tribe, if you want. We happen to be, in this case, would be the city, in this case, would be, when I say the city, I'm not talking about city government alone, I'm talking about the city as a community.
Thank you.
Ms. Westfall?
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
Well, certainly, and I think, I have been in the city for a number of years, and I think, and I hope, that every action that I have taken has been, when it dealt with the city, it has been for the best of the city. And I know that people disagreed maybe with some of the positions I've taken, but I've disagreed with theirs too. But I think underlying, in my heart, it has been, had been for the city. I moved here in 1973, I've stayed here.
Then you have the rest of your time to...
Okay, well, I will not be too long. I have a few points, I'll make them, I'll put them down, so I won't forget them, and a couple of them, of which I picked out, made as I've spoken. I think one, the reason that you should select me is experience. I've been involved with municipal government, or local government, virtually my whole career, since 1961, and I've been probably just about every level. In sixty-one, I was working as a surveyor on a team, a survey crew in the city of Los Angeles before I was going to college. Over the years, while I've had my own business, much of the work I did was for public agencies, either the city, the county, other small districts, and private interests too, but many of those all dealt with municipal affairs or public affairs. I've held positions essentially all the way from surveyor all the way to city manager at one time, or another, director of public works, city engineer, not only here but in other communities. I have knowledge of cities and cities' operations, and I have special knowledge, I think, of this city and this city's operations, not only in the special area of public works, my background, I'm trained as an engineer, educated as an engineer, but also, having been city manager, I've worked with, closely with the department heads of all the departments, the finance, the police, the fire department, the housing authority, so I have a good understanding of those areas. I'm not expert in those areas, but you wouldn't expect the manager to be expert in those areas, but you have to know. I have an appreciation and an understanding what the council has to go through. Many people probably think all you do is two hours twice a month, two hours on, two Mondays. There's a lot of committees you're on. I can't even, I can't even remember all of them, but I know each one of you sit on a number of committees, LAFCO, LTICO, your two-by-two committees, the borders, state, airport authority, or whatever, I forget what exactly, the household waste story, on and on and on, and there's lots of time that you have to spend. And that leads to, I have the time, I'm retired, I am available to do it, I can attend these things. I have other commitments, but they're by choice. I can choose what I do, as you're probably aware of some of the things I'm active in, but I don't have a job in the sense that I can be available just about any time. I'm committed to the community. I came here in 1973 and honestly thought that I would probably leave within a few years. I came with three small children, a relatively small nine-year-old, seven and two at that time, they've all grown up, they've gone to school here, they've graduated from high school here, some, one, two, still live in this community, one lives out of the area. So, I love the community, and that's one of the reasons I have stayed. And I'm prepared. I think I'm prepared for it, because having an understanding of the city, the city's operations, I can, in a sense, step up as a council member, almost up to speed from the day I start. It's, I have a very short learning curve. The things you are doing now that I would not be aware of, but for the most part, much of it I would be, and I'm familiar with the city operations. Beyond that, I have the opportunity, I'm not going, at this point, I'm not really seeking the license for position. I would like to step in and help the community. You have a budget process, you're coming up, I think I can be very helpful in that particular area. I'd just like to serve the city, and I've committed myself to this. I plan to stay here, and I've been here for pushing forty years, believe it or not, it's hard to believe. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, and I think you have some good candidates, and I'm quite pleased to see that you have as many that have taken interest in...
Absolutely.
We have a little correction. The yellow, when the yellow light goes on, and I'll tell the next candidate, you have minute and a, and three, one and three minutes?
One minute thirty.
One minute thirty seconds.
Left.
Left. I don't think they have pizza back there.
Too much fun back there.
We have a little correction. When the light turns yellow, you have another minute and thirty seconds, so you have ten minutes total, and we'll start with our first question from Councilmember Shalong.
Well, first of all, thank you for serving on our planning commission, and thank you for your continued interest to be here tonight. The first question is, what ideas do you have for increasing city revenues in a time of fiscal difficulties?
One of the things, and I mentioned this when I did my application, one of the things that I think is absolutely crucial is that we move from what we oftentimes refer to as long-range planning and ideas into practicality. Now, how you flesh all those things out is sometimes very, very difficult, because you have to make hard decisions on, well, we can't afford this, but there's also the reality that sometimes we can't afford not to do this. We're limited with our resources here. If the prison isn't here, we're not here as a community. I mean, we understand the dynamics of where our tax base is, but we also have arguably one of the most beautiful coastlines that you will find all the way from Southern California until we reach our northern border of our country, which means that we've got to figure out a way to make tourism a reality, whether that's dealing with questions of what do we do at the visitor center? Sure, it's a great question, but we've got to get to the point where we quit asking questions and debating and saying, "Well, maybe if," and make some tough decisions. I don't know how to have all those answers. I'm not an expert on all the details. I know this, that sometimes you have to take some risks, and you've got to go for it, and what's out to the west of us is our number one resource. It's our number one resource, and we've got to capitalize on that if we're gonna, if we're gonna move beyond the dreams.
Thank you. Councilmember Enia? Oh, wait, sorry, it's my turn. What do you believe are the five strategic priorities for the city?
Five strategic priorities for the city? Well, one of them may seem like an odd strategic priority, but it is something that I've talked with a lot of people, and I also put this in my application. I think the number one strategic priority ought to be reinstilling a great sense of confidence in the process by which we govern the city. It has nothing to do with saying someone's right or someone's wrong, but I have talked to way too many people, because of my contacts in this community, that quite frankly, and I don't mean any disrespect by this, but are not really interested in talking about our city council anymore, because their opinion is, well, they can't get along, and why should I listen to them? So, my number one strategic thing is, is we have to restore a sense of genuine confidence in our council, in our staff, and so that our community believes that we really care and that we... and that this is a place that we want to make someplace that other people wish they could be. Beyond that, secondly, I guess what I just mentioned about tourism, I think that we need to come to reality, logging's not coming back, fishing is always going to be a challenge because of state regulations and other that goes with that, and so we've got a beautiful place, how do we make it a place that people want to be? How do we make this a destination place? I don't know exactly how to do that, but it ought to be right at the top of our agenda of figuring out how to get people here so they'll spend their money. Beyond that, three, four, and five, gosh, it could be any one thing. I do think that there's some things that we need to really start figuring out, how do we make this a reality? How do we make Front Street a reality? How does that become a reality? Sitting on the planning commission, obviously, we talk about these things, we talk about signs, we talk about accesses, we've got to make this a reality, because it's going to be an absolute key component in making this a destination place. Yeah, I know it's going to be hard, I don't even know what, Ms. Mayor, I don't even know what four and five would be, but if we could get those three things actually into the planning, out of the planning stage and into the reality stage, four and five would take care of itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen, what is your style in building consensus?
My style in building consensus is you've got to learn to listen before you talk. If you can't learn to listen, you'll always find yourself talking over the top of other people, and you'll never really hear. If you can't hear people, and you can't hear one another, it's impossible to build consensus. One of the things that I do, when I counsel people, especially people who are fighting, is tell them, number one, you need to ask yourself, have we spent most of our time trying to compromise upon our decisions? Because once you go down the path of continually compromising, you always are left with a sense of resentment that I had to give up, what I didn't want to give up, to get what I absolutely felt like I had to get. That doesn't build consensus, it builds resentment, and we do that all the time in our relationships, in business, in homes, we do it where we're always giving up a little something, a little something, but we never give up the resentment. Consensus begins when people learn to listen first, so you can actually hear what another person is saying and begin to, because my experience is, is if you learn to listen to people, guess what? They'll listen to you, but when we don't listen to one another, consensus is absolutely impossible. You can't build consensus without listening.
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
Absolutely, Ms. Westfall, I believe in integrity, I try to live my life that way, I try to live as an, life as an open book. If you'd have told me twenty-eight years into my career choice in ministry that I'd come to a point in time where I would go to a little town with a little church and live on the property where everybody can see everything that I do, I'd have said, no, I have bigger dreams than that, but the reality is, is I have chosen to live my life in a way that says I'm going to make the decision that I believe is absolutely right in the best interest of that organization that I serve, whether it's my church or my community, and if that means that other people disagree with me, I'm going to do what I think is right, no matter what. I try to live that way, it's not always popular, and people who know me know that they don't always agree with me, but if I think it's the right thing to do, I'm going to do it anyway, and let the cost fall upon me, at least I can go to sleep at night and know that I did what I thought was right.
The rest of the time is yours.
You know, maybe I can save some of your time, I, you may need it for somebody else. What you see is what you get. I don't, I don't aspire necessarily to be a politician, I don't aspire to have the answers to every problem that this community has, but I do aspire to do one thing, and that is to offer what I have when I can. That's the way I try to live my life, we made a decision when we came here three and a half years ago, that this is the place that we believed that we wanted to spend the rest of our life, and at that point in time in my life where I'm making those kinds of decisions, I would not have volunteered to serve on the planning commission, nor would I have even considered serving on this council if I didn't believe that I just had something to offer as a plain-spoken, regular guy who tries to look at everything and then make the very best decision. I will mention, just in a public forum, what I shared with you in my application. I grew up in a chamber that didn't look anything like this, but served the same purpose, it was actually the, an old house that was attached to the backside of the fire hall where my dad served as mayor in a small community in Oregon. I grew up sitting there watching my father serve three different terms as mayor and also on the city council. His ability to simply say, listen, let's make the right decision, then we'll never ever have to second-guess ourselves. If we make the right decision the first time, we never have to worry about having to rethink it down the road. He was that kind of man, and I guess as I, not to wax sentimental, but you know what, when you, when you say goodbye to your parents, people you look up to, sometimes you come to a point in time in your life and you go, you know what, I kind of like to be a guy like that, like to be a guy that sits in a place like this, and that when he speaks, people go, you know what, he makes sense, because he really believes in what he says, and he believes that's what's best. I was the kind of person I want to be, you know what, and whether or not I end up being your selection or not, that's the person I'm going to try to be anyway in this community. I live here, I plan on living here for as long as God will let me live here, and so I wish you guys the very best, I know that you have a tough decision ahead of you, and I know that you're going to do the very best job you can to put the person in that chair that's going to best help this community be what it could be, can be, and will be, if we, if we put our minds to it, so. I gave you thirty-nine seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate the time.
What was the town in Oregon?
Cornelius, Oregon, it's about twenty miles west of Portland. I'm out of time.
Thank you so much. Our next candidate is Roger Gitlin.
Good afternoon.
We have one minor change in our process that, before you went into the room, you heard differently, when the yellow light goes on, it means you have a minute and thirty seconds, not thirty seconds, so that's one minor change. So, we'll start straight off with the questions.
All right.
Councilmember Shalong has the first one.
Okay.
Hello, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
The first question is, what ideas do you have for increasing city revenues during a time of fiscal difficulties?
Well, the fact is that we will need to raise revenues, because we're going to get all cities, including Crescent City, are going to get less and less help from Sacramento. So, I've given this some thought, and one of the ideas that I came up with is some kind of an occupancy tax for the, right now, tax-free mobile home trailers and RVs that come into our city. So, I know that the hotel has a ten percent tax, I think it's reasonable to expect people, especially in the summertime when they're coming in for two and three days, to pay some kind of an override. The avenues for accepting, finding new ones are going to be very challenging, I'm very much into grants, and I think we have to continue to search that, but until I get my teeth into it, I can't sit here and tell you where all those avenues are, but certainly the occupancy tax on trailers and mobile homes that come in on tourism is an option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second question is, what do you believe are the top five strategic priorities for the city?
Well, a big issue for me is blight. I called city manager Palazzo this last couple of days, I am like a hawk when it comes to city blight and graffiti, and I see that as one of those issues. When I see it, I'm going to call it in, I'm going to expect that it's going to be taken down. Other issues, I believe we need to have our law enforcement beefed up, we are in fact two types of cities. We are a city in the winter months where our population is depleted, but crime goes on, in the summer months, July Fourth Parade, we might have upwards of fifty thousand people here, so law enforcement would also be one of those priorities. I would say our water and sewer issue is a major issue, as is solid waste, that would be number four, and tourism, that would be probably, I would put that as number one in making our town as user-friendly as possible, it's a marine town, and I think I would like to see that marketed in a little more aggressively. I think I got five there.
Thank you.
Mr. Gitlin, what is your style in building consensus?
Well, I'm not one who looks at something and says we need to tear it down, I'd like to look at the glass as half-full rather than half-empty. I like to think of myself as a consensus person, I certainly have opinions, and, but I'm always open to someone telling me something that I may not know, i.e., we're talking about revenues for our city, which we're going to need. I'm going to be like a sponge when it comes to something that I do not know, and there are, there's a reservoir of things that I do not know about Crescent City, so I'm going to try to absorb as much as I can and then bring to the table on a consensus forum that will bring our city up to a high level, make it vibrant, make it exciting, make it a place that, not as a drive-thru city, but actually an end destination city. I also see the harbor as our focal point, and that should be something that should be explored, we have a new, an opportunity here, a state-of-the-art harbor that's being renovated, that should be, I was going to do that in my kind of summation of how I see our future, is the harbor as our center of our town.
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
Absolutely, I can answer that in one word. I don't own any, no one owns me, and I don't own anybody else. I have opinions, and I'm happy to share them with you, and if something is wrong, it's wrong, and if something is right, well, someone once told me, don't argue with someone who's right. All right.
The rest of the time is yours.
Well, if someone asked me, what's my vision for Crescent City, and I say, well, I moved up here almost two years ago, we've come up for upwards of fifteen years, and I found myself attracted to arguably one of the most beautiful coastlines in the world, and we live on it, and I'm grateful that we do. I see the opportunity with our city and our harbor to make this a little jewel on the West Coast. I envision at some point barges coming up from Eureka, or even Oakland, or down from Portland, bringing in freight, taking some of the traffic off the treacherous 101 highway, barges that bring in freight and create jobs. I envision small cruise ships coming into our harbor on three- and four-day cruise, à la what they do in Alaska, coming up from Oakland or down from Portland so people can see our Redwood Coast and go to our lighthouses. So, I see Crescent City with great potential, I'd like to be part of its future, I have something to contribute, I have something to bring to the table, it's, nothing comes for free, it's going to be expensive, and we simply need to find the monies to bring our city into modern times. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Richard Hawley. Well, he's coming up, those of you who came in a little late, we will have, give you opportunity for public comment before the council makes their decision. Welcome, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Our first question comes from Councilmember Shalong.
Okay.
Thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate your interest in our city.
You're welcome.
What ideas do you have for increasing city revenues in a time of fiscal difficulties?
Clearly, I think we need to capitalize on the environment that we're in, we have beautiful ocean, we have, we have a lot to offer for tourism, it seems to me that the only real viable choices for the city are tourism, or maybe some light industry, as we get more technology coming into the area, I think that maybe we can accommodate some of that kind of industry within the city limits. But tourism, I think, is the key to some stabilization and some growth in our economy. Along with that, hopefully, business will rise, and in looking at the general plan, I think you've made some good accommodations for changing Front Street and for changing the S-curve, we talked about the S-curve, actually, the S-curve more toward the hotel, and, and I think there's a lot there to build on, but I know that there's going to be some active effort at grant funding, because I know we can't do it with our current funds, but we need, we need to grow that economy, and we need to grow that economy, I was thinking about this earlier, and we all know that that's beneficial for everyone, but I was thinking about those of us who have lived and worked in Crescent City, and we have kids that go off, and they get trained our very best and brightest, and they're unable to come back, so I would look forward to being a part of an effort to get an economy that would enable those kids to come home.
Thank you.
What do you believe are the top five strategic priorities for the city?
The top five strategic priorities for the city? I think economic growth, certainly, I think we need to continue to grow to provide opportunities for our citizenry and, and to assure sufficient infrastructure so that we all have the kind of city we want to live in. I think environmentally, we need to look careful, carefully at the environment to make sure that those economic priorities are consistent with what our goals are to maintain our environment that allows for tourism and, and other kinds of activities where we bring people in. I think improving our transportation processes is good, we've made great strides, I think, with bike paths and sidewalks that are, that are improving all the time, and, and the ability to move to and from the harbor, I think that's going to be beneficial, so I think anything we can do to improve transportation availability, both automobile transportation and airport transportation, I think, are critical to the city and its stability and growth. I'm sorry, I can't come up with the other strategies, but thank you.
That was four.
That was four, well, there's got to be one more.
What is your style in building consensus?
You know, building consensus, I think, is absolutely important, maybe it's not imperative in a, in a, in a city council, but it is important. When I'm involved in the school district, as you know, and I do what's called interest-based bargaining, there's really a principle in interest-based bargaining that says that you, you are hard on issues and soft on people, and I think that's a premise that will help toward getting consensus, is if we really concentrate on the issues and the solutions to those issues, as opposed to the personalities and the different, the different kinds of maybe competing solutions to those problems. We look at the problems themselves, and we figure out a solution that we can all live with, and so I think that the city council process could kind of mirror those interest-based principles and be successful.
Thank you.
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
Yes.
The rest of the time is yours.
The rest of the time is mine, thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to come here, I, as I walked through the door, I looked at this very fine group of applicants that you have today, and I, and I looked around, and I didn't see any tears, so I felt better about, about continuing on with my interview. It's, it's different to be on this side of the table, as you know, as the HR director, I'm usually where you are, so I haven't interviewed for a very long time, but it's important to me to be here, I think. Over the years, I've been approached to consider applying for the city council, and I've had competing interests, raising my family for a period of thirty-two years here in Crescent City, had very responsible employment positions that I've outlined on my application, and a lot of volunteer work, and, and I, there just didn't seem, the timing wasn't right. And then when this particular applicant, vacancy came up, I thought, well, maybe now is the time where I can give back, and I, and I appreciate the kind of lives that we've led in Crescent City, the opportunities that we've had, and I want to ensure that those opportunities continue for, for future generations. I'm here, I've been here, and I intend to stay here, and so I'm invested in the best interests of Crescent City.
Anything else? Anything else?
No, I, I can't add. I maybe, I, I'm assuming you're, you have my application before you, but I know the other people in the room don't my, don't my strengths and my weaknesses, although I'll mostly concentrate on my strengths. I, I, I actually came from a law enforcement background. I was, I was a probation officer both in Sacramento and in Del Norte County. So as a probation officer in the past, I've always been very supportive of law enforcement and supportive and understanding of law enforcement. I've seen firsthand what law enforcement does on a day-to-day basis. I've been there with them. And, and so I'm very interested in the, in the, in the police department of the city and maintaining its integrity. I've worked in a variety of social service areas. I've worked as a director for an agency for developmentally disabled people. I have been a counselor for the developmentally disabled. I have worked in child and adult protective services and had a number of programs and services under my supervision at that time. At that time, I was actually the supervisor of adult services. And so, understanding that we have a large population in Crescent City that are seniors, I have a keen understanding, I think, of some of the challenges that they face on a daily basis because I was called to intervene in some of those challenges. And, and so I think I have some sensitivity to that and I, hopefully, that I can, I can, I can use that knowledge as in my decision-making with the council. So in my various capacities, I have, again, been a director of a nonprofit and dealt with a board there. I've dealt with the Board of CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates, where I was president on, for two terms. And I'm currently very involved, of course, with the Del Norte Unified School District. I attend all the meetings and I understand how meetings run and how decisions are reached. I will say that I know that budgets are something we're all concerned about, especially in these times. And I have a great deal of understanding about budgets. I've had budgets, I've had a, had a board of 15 people that I formulated the budget and I monitored the budget over time. I have had individual program budgets that I've been involved with. And I've also at the school district, my budget is only about $360,000 for my personnel budget. But the school district's budget is about $50 million. And 85% of the revenues for that budget are associated with personnel. So I'm integrally involved in that budget and, and its regular reviews. So I think I'm, I'm well-qualified and equipped to be a city council person. I know you have a difficult decision to reach and I do appreciate your considering me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Ronald Gastineau.
Hello.
Hello. Our first question will be from Councilmember Shalong.
Mr. Gastineau, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Also, thank you for sitting on our planning commission and continuing to want to serve our city. The first question tonight is, "What ideas do you have for increasing city revenues in a time of fiscal difficulties?"
That's a tough question, especially with everybody, you know, being taxed. We have increases in fees. And of course, our services are always being decreased because we don't have enough revenue to be able to do them. I believe that, you know, if, if we're able to, and I'm going to choke on this question. We have to find ways that through efficiencies, we can do better service. Then we can be able to charge increased fees for these services or add services that we haven't previously done and charge for those. It's hard to say what services that we actually need to increase right now because I'm not privy to the information of what we have right now to offer for our citizens. But the, the basic is that we definitely need to find some way to serve them and then be able to charge for those services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is, "What do you believe are the top five strategic priorities for the city?"
Well, you know, I come back to services. With the national emergency grant that we had, we, we had a lot of people that were put out of work from that and we came, came back and we put them to work helping with city, county and harbor projects that have been put off. Infrastructure is a big thing that we definitely need to address because those are the assets of the city that, that we will take into the future. And also, as we increase those assets and their values, it will help us with our growth. Of course, the growth of our city, definitely having people, you know, jobs, paying taxes will definitely increase our revenues. So infrastructure is definitely one of them. Helping out businesses to be able to employ more people and have them at work paying taxes and then, and putting more money in our city coffers is definitely a priority that I have. The Front Street project coming up, definitely to beautify the city. We're at a precipice right here. I see a lot of potential for our city coming up. And these are the things that will hopefully bring in new people, new businesses. So that's definitely a good priority. That's three. Also, possibly the visitor's center, that's, that's coming up. Keep those dollars coming into our city, having those people stop as opposed to driving through. Making sure that we definitely grab those tourist dollars as they come through. And I imagine that the fifth priority would definitely be to cooperate more and to get things done so that we could grow, grow the city, have it prosper. So a little more cooperation, that's going to be a strategic priority for the city.
Thank you.
What is your style in building of consensus?
I definitely like to hear all sides, come to some sort of conclusion and then try to plead my case for what I think might be the best option to go forward. But if, if you don't have all the information, you really can't make an informed decision. So you have to hear from all sides. And, and another thing about building consensus, if you do get your way and the vote goes your way, that's good. But if it doesn't, you have to just move on to the next thing and continue to work for a better city.
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
Of course. You can't answer that question really any other way. But I understand where you're coming from. And when you're in the city council, you represent the city everywhere you go. And I, you know, I do a lot of crazy stuff outside, but it's for fun and also to promote mostly city projects. I do stuff in the Business Improvement District. I'll be in the head of the Halloween parade, taking those kids down the street. I'll be dressing up as a big old Viking, throwing fruitcake at gingerbread men. But that is all part of the growth of the city, getting people involved and, and downtown. So I also have no personal agenda except to make sure that Crescent City grows and prospers.
Okay, the rest of the time is yours.
Wow. Now you have to listen to me. You already did. Basically, I believe that I have a pretty stable personality. I can make good decisions, listen to people and come to consensus and hopefully work to make this a better place. I grew up here, I was born and raised in Crescent City. I know about what it used to be. I have no illusions that it will be that way again, but I see extreme potential. And, and the best thing is that you can say is that you always want to do better for your, your kids. And that would be my main goal, is to make sure that I leave this city better for everybody else behind me. That's all I got to say.
Anything else? You have, still have a little bit of time, but if you'd rather not, you may sit down.
I am good, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ron. And our last candidate, but not least, is Mr. Joseph Aliotti.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All right, your first question will come from Councilmember Shalong.
Okay.
Thank you for your service and for wanting to continue serving the city of Crescent City. Appreciate it.
Can I interrupt? I forgot to tell you that when the yellow light goes on, that means you have a minute and a half, not 30 seconds. So you have a total of 10 minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So the first question is, "What ideas do you have for increasing revenues in a time of fiscal difficulty?"
Well, I think one thing would be the TOT tax. I'm not sure exactly, I know it's been tossed around with the council in the past. I'm not sure exactly where you are all with it right now. But that's one thing that I think could raise revenues. Also, maybe we could do some advertising. We've got some areas here where we could like the basketball thing that comes every year. I think that's a great thing to get people here, get more tourism, that kind of thing. And I think with the park that they're building behind Safeway is a great idea to advert, for have businesses to advertise there, put up signs, advertising their business, what they do, hours and things like that.
Thank you.
The next question is, "What do you believe are the top five strategic priorities for the city?"
Oh, boy. I think that the wastewater treatment plant. Something's got to happen with that. The fees and how it's operated. I'm not sure where to go with that and what the, all the issues are. I know that there's been some problems with getting people here to work there. And then the issues of the fees. Again, I think the TOT is something that should be reviewed, looked over, see where we can go with that. Front Street, I think, is important to get that worked out. I know that the city engineer has brought that up and they're working on that. I think the cultural center. Some issues could be worked out there with the Chamber of Commerce and the visitor's center. I think maybe just general, get some more businesses up here. I know a couple of businesses have closed. I think we could get, try and get those filled. And some of the businesses, the buildings that are forming a type of blight. I'm hoping that maybe we can get some of the landowners to get them up, paint them and maybe refurbish them in some way so we can get some more businesses here.
What is your style in building consensus?
Keep it open. Talk about what the issues are, let people bring up what is important to them. Work out the issues that, they may be difficult issues, but you've got to work them out and sometimes they can't reach a consensus. That's the hard part of being in government is people are, just want things done a certain way and they're not willing to work with you. So I think keep an open mind and let the chips fall where they may sometimes. Well, sometimes that's all you got.
Thank you.
Will you always act in the best interest of Crescent City without any personal agenda or conflict of interest, whether real or apparent?
I think so. I think that the main thing is to work with the majority without infringing on the minority's rights. I think that's a, that's a big part of working in politics and government is following that. It can be very difficult, but that's one of the main things about that. So yes, following the, following the city's code of ethics, very important. Working as a body, letting people know where you stand, where you want to go. Definitely keep the city's interests in mind, best interests of the public. Yes.
Okay, the rest of the time is yours.
Okay. I think this is a challenging time for our city and not just Crescent City and the, and the nation. There's so many problems, especially with revenue. Starting new businesses, keeping businesses going. Employment tax is, I don't know what can be done about that if we can. But I found out that just recently employers' taxes have gone up. And not only that, with the sewage and garbage fees have gone up. So I'm hoping I can do something with that, see what, what can be done. This thing with the tsunami, the debris that's coming over from the Pacific, I think is something that needs to be looked at. I know that Cindy Henderson with the county is working on that and I've talked with Jean about it. And I'm hoping that we have enough time to address that issue. It seems to be moving a little bit faster than normal. But we might have a year or two before that impacts us and that could be a problem. I've reviewed the Rosenberg's Rules of Order and have a copy of that and review that and hope I can bring something to the city. And that's it.
Nothing else? You still have a little time.
Okay.
You don't have to talk if you don't want to, though.
I'm not sure where else to go from this point. I mean, it's just, I want to keep an open mind about it and see what issues are brought forward. So I don't have any agenda other than that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Now is the opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Mr. Miles?
As a city resident, I'm aware that this decision tonight is important to my community, to the city residents. I remain very quiet and listen to everybody, which is unusual for me. But I heard some things that I found kind of disturbing and I want to point these out to you because, number one, I believe it's tied with that my city consider annexing a harbor. I didn't hear that from anybody. I know who I would suggest that you appoint tonight, but that could be the kiss of death. But some other considerations that I didn't hear tonight. I think we're all aware that we got to tighten our, our belts because one of the speakers was right. We're not going to be getting a lot from Sacramento. But I don't want to see anyone on my city staff to be laid off. And I think a good point was made by the superintendent of schools when he talked about his dad. We need to protect the jobs of our employees. And yes, we need to do something about our law enforcement. I personally would like to see the city put something back on the ballot. And that's to increase the TOT tax. And I personally think it would be a stupid idea to charge RV people that come to our RV park on the S-curve RV park on the ass curve where there's not a sign to charge them any more than we're charging them. We should be fixing that up as a revenue source.
Thank you. Other public comment? You're going the wrong way, Scott. No other public comment? Okay.
How's your time to give us input?
This is your opportunity to advocate for a candidate that you'd like to see appointed. So no takers? All right, I will close public comment then, and we will do as we said with marking the top two candidates, each one of us individually, and then we will give our sheets to our city clerk, and she will tally them up and see if there is a couple of candidates that we all might agree on, and then we'll announce the results of that, so.
Can we comment before we move forward?
Sure.
Please do. I just wanted to say I'm very impressed with all six candidates, and I sincerely mean that. When I ran, you know, I had to be elected, so I think being appointed kind of is a little bit harder of a process, because you really have 10 minutes to make an impression, and those 10 minutes mean a lot to the city. And so I just want to thank you. I'm sure any one of you would do a good job. And so, thank you, and, you know, look forward to, if you're not selected this evening, your continued service to our community, because, like I mentioned earlier, we have some really wonderful people that live in our city and a beautiful area that we live in, and we're pretty blessed. So, thank you.
And having been an interviewee two times, I can say that I know that it's really a difficult and brave thing that you're doing. So, thank you. So, do we have everybody's ballots done?
No, I'm not done. Can we have just a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll take a five-minute recess, if anybody wants to get up and stretch their legs while we're doing this.
Yes.
Okay. The top two applicants that got the most check marks next to them, and want to say to the others, thank you again for your time and effort and your dedication to the city and your willingness to put yourself on the line, because it's not an easy thing to do. So the top two candidates are Mr. Young and Mr. Hawley. And what we will do next is to entertain a motion for an appointment of one of the top two, and then we'll pull the vote and see if we have the majority voting on either one of those based on the motion. So do we have a motion for an appointment?
I don't mind making a motion. I thought about this probably for the last 72 hours nonstop, because it's a big, it's a big decision for us. And I actually came down to what if this one person is in the top two. And so I had to decide if I felt it was important that the person wanting to serve the city wanted to do it temporarily or might consider running in the future. And as much as I think Mike might bring more to the table initially, you know, more of an immediate, I really hope that the person that is selected tonight has an interest in continuing to serve the city. And so I would make a motion to accept Mr. Hawley as our selection.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Could you please roll the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Enya?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes. So congratulations, Mr. Hawley. You're our selection, and thank you again. We will now swear Mr. Hawley in.
Oh, we are now?
Yeah.
Cool.
Boy, that's quick.
We don't want you to get away.
I'm not sure I want to do this part.
So if you raise your hand in voice. I'm ready. Yeah.
I, Richard Hawley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance?
And allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which?
The duties upon which?
I am about to enter.
I'm about to enter. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And you may now, Mr. Hawley, if you'd like, you may, for the closing of the meeting, sit up at your new...
You now have one-fifth responsibility of a new boat that just landed in the beach.
Can I object to closing this meeting? Is that...
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
And thank you again for everyone who did apply. We really appreciate that.
Outstanding.
So we will adjourn our, this meeting until our regular meeting on, when, Friday, excuse me, Monday, February 6th at 5:00 PM for closed session. Open session at 6:00 PM after.